All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, would you read our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit and dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility, and especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community, that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Ma'am? Step up to the microphone, please. And if you could just identify yourself, name an address for the public at home.
My name is Bridgette McDonald, and I live on 11 Lakingham Drive, Carver.
Thank you. You can sit down if you'd like.
I came here tonight, as many of you know, I'm outraged because this is what's coming out of my tap, and this is clear compared to what's happened since Thursday. But even prior to that, we've had water interruption for the past month. Several times, my daughter has called me at work and said, "We have no water at our home." And like I said, this is clear compared to Thursday, which was brown and you could not even see through it. It burns your eyes, and I'm not even going to try and drink it, but unfortunately, my children's grandmother is elderly and lives on 7 Green Street, is blind, and did consume the brown water because she wasn't able to see it. I'm outraged. I've emailed all of you over the weekend. I've gotten one response. I just think this is an emergent situation. I'm buying water instead of using our own water, which doesn't make sense to me. That's town-supplied water. Basically, I'm just outraged, and I know you're saying there's a meeting on Thursday, but that's a week later, and I feel like it's a little more emergent, and I don't understand why fresh water isn't being delivered to our neighborhoods right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board? All right. Mr. Fennessey has a town administrator update scheduled for later in the meeting, but if the board, there's no objections, he has an update on the North Carver water that he'd like to make at the beginning. Any objections from the board on that? And just prior to his update, a couple of things. So first of all, I did work extensively with Mr. Fennessey over the weekend trying to schedule an emergency agenda item for this particular meeting. I was advised, unfortunately, multiple times, and Mr. Fennessey also spoke with town council, that we couldn't schedule an emergency agenda item because it's not under our purview. It's under the purview of the North Carver Water District, and they're the only ones that can schedule the emergency meeting. Is that, am I correct, Mr. Fennessey?
Correct.
And that's why we scheduled the joint meeting on Thursday, because under state law requiring 48 hours' notice, with the weekend Monday being a holiday, the earliest we could schedule it was Thursday. I wish we could have done something earlier. I sympathize, I agree with you, but we couldn't. And I know, Mr. Fennessey, you want to speak to that a little more.
Yep. So, through an update to the board, thank you. On Thursday night, we're going to have a joint meeting with the North Carver Water District. They're coming in at 6:00, where we'll be looking at the issues that have arisen from this issue of the dirty water and so forth, along with other issues, past issues, and look to see if we can come up with some solution, either both short-term and long-term. Long-term, there may be need for updates to the plant itself, including the filters that filter this water. Short-term, it may be purchasing water from another community and getting through that process. So this meeting, if anybody, I want to say this to the public too, if anybody wants to come to the meeting, it's right here at 6:00 on Thursday. Both boards will be here. You'll be able to talk to the boards, and you'll be able to hear what the discussion will be by the boards and how this will be resolved. So that's the first thing. Also want to say that the number and people, the district is being maintained by the small water systems services, and their number of something, if you have a concern or a complaint, you can call them at (978) 486-1008. And lastly, I just want to mention that-
Mr. Fennessey, could you repeat that number?
Okay. So that is (978) 486-1008.
Is that number available 24 hours a day, or is that only certain hours? Do we know?
It's probably a recorder after hours.
Okay.
But, you know, make sure that they check them.
Okay.
And the other thing, tomorrow night, which is June 22nd, depending on when you're watching this, at 10:00, they're going to flush the system with water and try and remove the majority, if not all, of the dirtiness of the water. So there'll be, you'll see some drop-offs in pressure during that time, and more discoloration as they pump out the system. So that's tomorrow night. It'll be going on at 10:00 PM, and it'll run during the night.
And that should pretty much be done by the early morning, right?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's the first thing, and since I'm doing an update, can I just update also on the battery and solar moratorium committees?
Sure.
So the articles that passed at annual town meeting this past April, the articles are still in the Attorney General's office, and they're being reviewed. I know in some communities, there's been concerns of regulating solar because there's general laws that protect solar, especially with any kind of regulations. So that's what they're looking at. It might take a little longer than we expected to get that through the process, but once that's through the process, then we can start with the moratorium and the committee that's being put together for reviewing the bylaws and other bylaws of other communities, looking at the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So in that regard, I put together a base of committees for both of them, and they're going to be the same committee members if they so choose to be on both, they may just want to be on one. It's going to be comprised of two select board members, two planning board members, one ZBA member, one from agricultural interests in the town, and one member at large. And then, along with that, I'm going to have ex officio members who can bring in information or other ideas, expertise, and some of those will be the building commissioner will be one of them. Our planner, Tom Bott, will be another one, and I'll be an ex officio member of that committee. And when we do get the committee together for the first, I'll appoint a chair on the committee. And I'm looking at doing it on Tuesday nights, off nights of the Select Board meeting, and probably 6:00. But once we start that, I'll let the chair then develop the agenda and develop the meeting days. So I just want to update you on that. I'll keep you updated on the progress as we go forward in this, and I'll look, maybe by next meeting, if two of the board members, well, I know one has already made her request. If you want to let me know whether you want to be on it or not, and I hope there's only two, then apply. But then we'll put that together, and I'll also reach out to the planning board.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the board?
No.
All right. All right, moving forward. The next item on our agenda is to ratify the town administrator contract. We discussed this contract earlier in executive session. Is there a motion to ratify the town administrator contract?
Make a motion to ratify the contract between the town of Carver and the town administrator, Robert H. Fennessey, Jr.
In a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. Fennessey, we are very happy to have you here. We appreciate all the hard work you've done during the interim period. I think it's been, speaking for myself, exemplary. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. And I just, now that we've gotten through the long process of hiring an interim, before I say that, Mr. Fennessey, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just want to thank the board and thank the department heads and others that I've worked with in the six months. It's been a great, great opportunity for me to work with such professionals in town and in the board members, and I really look forward to being part of this community for the next four years. So thank you so much, and thank you, everybody, for your support. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, while we're, now that we've completed the process of hiring a permanent town administrator, it's been a long process, sometimes difficult, and I just have to acknowledge the work of our assistant town administrator, Elaine Weston. She's not here this night, tonight, she's on vacation, but through three different town administrators, two interim town administrators, and over two years, her work has been exemplary. She has carried through some difficult times, and often, I think, times I think her work is not fully noticed by the members of the public because she does it so well. So I just want to publicly acknowledge all her hard work through this period as well. I think it's important for everyone to know.
Thank you, and I echo that too, exactly.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Well, the board.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Could I?
Absolutely.
When I was a new member to the board, one of the first things I did was take a webinar, and the webinar said, "The most important thing that a select board member could do is to hire a town administrator." And probably, I annoyed these guys and Jim with how many times I quoted and talked about the webinars I took. But I really took it to heart and how important that is, and I took it seriously. And in the last year, when we've gone through the process, I took it so seriously that I chose to not vote if I didn't feel confident in the right town administrator. And today, I voted for one, and I'm confident in that vote, and it means a lot to me. So, welcome to town.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now I'm blushing, so move on.
All right. Again, welcome, Mr. Fennessey. We're very happy to have you here. The next item on our agenda is an ABCC license hearing. NGR Cape Cod Beverage Company LLC, 20 U-String Road, Wine and Malt. Is there anyone here to speak? On the applicant?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Josh Levine of Levine Law, from way off in our west, East Long Meadow, and I have the pleasure tonight of representing NGR Cape Cod Beverage Company LLC.
I'm sorry, could you use the microphone really closely?
Sorry.
Thank you.
NGR Cape Cod BevCo, as I understand, Mr. Don Soro is a familiar face around here. That's the campground in town. They're planning on adding a beer and wine license to the already-existing camp store to have a small retail shop out of there. I'd be happy to present his qualifications if the board would like.
I think for the record, it would to do.
Mr. Don Soro has decades of managerial experience. He has been on a liquor license previously down in Nashville, had no disciplinary issues with that license. His office and residence are in the same building as the store, so he'll rarely be very far from the licensed premises. There'll be six to seven employees at the store, and there are plans for everyone and all employees at the store to be tips trained, as well as the manager of record will be tips trained as well. And the NGR is the license holder, they're out of Michigan. They have at least one other campground with a similar situation that has a retail beer and wine license, and they've had no issues as well. And just as general information, the liquor sale hours will be 9:00 to 7:00 PM normally, and would be 9:00 to 9:00 during peak summer hours, that's June, July, and August, and the campground closes for the season in October. So we're talking about a very limited operation here, and we have an experienced manager who is aware of the responsibilities of the manager of record, and hope for your approval tonight.
All right. Sir, do you have anything else to say?
No, I am just happy to be here. It's always, I appreciate the support. You know, the campground is doing really well. We have a lot of exciting things going on, and we've had a, your staff here in the permitting office and others, been amazing, so I want to say thank you for that. And I'm just happy to be here and to continue to grow my footprint in Carver and call it home and get a world-class campground resort here in our town. So thank you, guys, for allowing that to happen.
Okay, thank you. Was that all? Do you have anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Come on up to the microphone if you folks could. Makes, if you folks could.
Sorry. Hi, everybody. My name is Minnie Patel, and my parents own Dave's Convenience and Liquors.
Use the microphone, Ms. Patel.
That's okay.
We want people to hear you.
Okay, thank you. If you're unaware of our business, we are located at 239 Tremont Street, less than a mile away from the campground. If you visit us in the morning, you'll get to see my mom, and then my dad covers the night shift. My parents have been the owners of Dave's Convenience for over 15 years, and they themselves are the only two employees. So you could say we're a very small, family-owned business. We have been serving the community of Carver everyday essential items and alcoholic beverages for over 15 years. The extremely close proximity of the campground allows us to gain a large portion of our revenue from the campgoers that go there yearly. About 75% of our summer revenue comes from these campgoers, as our sales are drastically lower in the off-seasons. Permitting a beer and wine license on the campground would significantly drive away revenue from our family-owned business. With the small community of Carver residents, the minimal outside foot traffic, and already existing competing businesses, every customer attained is valuable to us. And if you've met my dad at the store, you know he instantly makes friends out of everybody. It's important to note that we view the campground as an ally. We help their campgoers by providing everyday necessities and alcoholic beverages. We do not deem it appropriate for the sale of alcohol on the premises, as it is a popular family resort with many children. We serve as a close off-premise location where those who want to seek those alcoholic beverages can responsibly do so on their own time. The campground has remained successful in its campground business for many years. Large corporations have been overtaking small businesses for years, and it's important to acknowledge and honestly hard to ignore the current economic climate that we are in. For most of us, you're basic consumers who witnesses the rising prices every day, but for my parents, they witness it in a different way. Their cost of inventory is also going up, and they are faced with the question of, "How do we remain profitable while still being affordable?" That in itself is a difficult question to answer, but on top of that, having the question of, "How do we remain profitable while having a majority of our consumers taken away from us," is even harder. We want to remain allies with the campground, and we hope you understand where our rejection is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just had a question with regards to both businesses. Is, are there, other than the alcohol, are there competing products that are sold?
Yeah, so we sell, it's a convenience store too, so we sell basically like regular, like everyday essential items, towels, we sell them wood, sodas, chips, ice cream, snacks, basically a lot of everyday items that you go to a convenience store for.
And you don't sell those?
We do.
Oh, you do? So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The board will deliberate. Ms. Ewens?
So, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to rely on our town administrator for a more complete answer, but it's my understanding that the Select Board doesn't really have the authority to deny an alcoholic beverage license as long as we are below the limit of the number of establishments set by the state. Is that correct?
Somewhat. You can deny it if there's issues that would warrant a denial.
Okay.
For instance, if they had liquor law violations in another community.
Okay.
You'd deny it on that. All the paperwork is in order here, and the taxes are paid here. So it's really just, you can set limits on the hours, you can, on the days, you can set whatever limits you want to set. We really can't deny it, per se.
And just for, to make everyone clear, there is a liquor license available, correct, right now?
Yes.
Correct?
There's a malt in.
That's right. That's right. That's why I was under the impression. Thank you. Anything else from the board?
I just was wondering if you, sir, could tell us again the hours that you were planning to sell the wine and malt?
On the applications, 9:00 to 7:00 is listed during, for the license, and 9:00 to 9:00 during peak hours, so really, the license would say 9:00 to 9:00, but the plan would be to close at 7:00, generally.
So that's seven days a week?
Yes.
And like, right now, we don't open until 10:00 AM anyway. So we adjust our hours a little bit, but that would be the timeframe. It would be 9:00 to 9:00, within that timeframe.
So, if I may, so, Mr. Fennessey, we really don't have the authority to deny the license based on the fact that they're competing businesses.
All right. Anything else on the board? Is there a motion?
Well, I guess, I really sympathize with you guys. I live in South Carver. I drive by Dave's a million times a week, so I sympathize with you very much, and it seems like our hands are tied in this situation. I'm sorry that we can't do more, and I hope that this doesn't impact your business detrimentally. But, so I just, I hope that you guys are okay, so.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Well, since we don't seem to have much choice, I move that we approve the ABCC liquor license for NGR Cape Cod Beverage Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have an affidavit of the butters notice. Can I put that into the record?
Yes, please.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the recognition of Walter Benoit from Chief of Police, Mark Duthely. Chief?
Good evening, and thank you again for a few minutes to speak tonight. Tonight, we honor the legacy of a very special member of the Carver Police Department. After 38 years of faithful service to the town of Carver, Special Police Officer Walter Benoit is retiring. Walter is a kind, gentle, professional police officer who will be missed by all. Officer Benoit began his career to the town of Carver in 1984 under Chief Oars' watch. Prior to working in Carver, he spent four years as an auxiliary police officer in the city of Taunton. To quote his employment application from way back when, he wrote that he wanted to "bring that experience to help my town." He certainly has done that. During this tenure, Officer Benoit has worked for seven chiefs of police, many police sergeants, and alongside numerous police officers, all of whom respect him and would be here tonight to honor him if they could. I have had the pleasure and honor to work alongside him over the last 20 years. During that time, Walter has proven himself repeatedly as a consummate professional and all-around great person. He has worked traffic details, assisted patrol in special events such as Halloween coverage, worked during some of the worst storms we've had, and has always been there whenever the department or the town needed him. In addition to his work as a police officer, Walter has also helped the department save money. If you look at the furniture in the old police station, majority of it came to the department as donations from Walter's full-time career at Hamonetics. He single-handedly outfitted many of the offices in the old station with desks and chairs. Officer Benoit's service to the town over the years has been immense, and he will be severely missed. Even as we wish him well with the next chapter in his life, he will always be a welcome member of our team. At this time, I'd like to ask Walter to come up and present him with a plaque for his years of service. The Select Board can come up as well. So this plaque is presented to Walter Benoit, giving an appreciation and recognition for your 38 years of loyal service and dedication to the town of Carver, from the Carver Police Department and all the members that are here tonight. Thank you, Walter, for your service.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate it, and we're going to miss you.
We're going to miss you too.
38 years, that's quite a legacy of service.
Yes, it is. And I think had police reform not come into play and changed how we deal with special police officers, I think he'd probably stick around for another 10 if he could.
Chief, while you're there, our next item on our agenda is the appointment of special police officers Peter Allegrini, Patrick Charet, Christopher Maloney, Jim Moscato, Ashley Odell, Michael O'Donnell, and Scott Sampson.
Thank you. So I know I've talked about it before, I'll just give you a brief. If you remember, our special police officers help us by working paid traffic details, which has only increased and is getting more difficult to fill jobs. We've had several jobs this week alone that we couldn't fill, or that we had to move things around to be able, get the DPW to be able to work on the roads safely. So we've, we'd like to continue, all the officers you just mentioned are currently special police officers. Their appointments are up every year in June, so I'd like to ask you to vote to reappoint them. They're very valuable members of our team. They don't cost the town virtually anything. They pay for their own uniforms and their gear, and they're very, very valuable members of our team. And once, I hope you'll take a vote on this tonight to approve them, I think in a very recent future meeting, we'll be bringing a couple more to ask you to approve, because we just, we desperately need the bodies to work. Carver's not alone. Every town is experienced in that, have not enough people to get out there and work on the road, so.
Chief, could you just discuss how, if at all, the Police Reform Act has affected the special police officers?
So last, the Police Reform Bill was passed by the legislature. The design or the thought process to it was to bring everyone to the same level of training. In the past, special police officers went to a different academy, a little bit less hours, they didn't have to do the physical running and stuff like that. So the thought process is to bring everybody to the same level of training. As with anything, it didn't occur that way. There's a process to allow some of them to have what's called a bridge academy. Peter Allegrini, one of our special police officers, has completed that, but he still has to earn, work $2,400. has to earn, work 2,400 hours of experience before he can get certified. So, that process, which is about 200 hours, 80 of which are online, 120 which are in-person, driving and shooting and defensive tactics, has pushed a lot of people who follow the rules and took the training necessary to be out there on the road directing traffic in the capacity they were, away from this. So, as Walter, because he's, his last name is B., A. through H. is this year to get certified, and he chose not to go through that academy. And that's definitely caused a considerable amount of loss to local, especially small departments here and out west, small departments out west, some are staffed by all part-time people. So, they've pushed that away. There's a good reason for it, let's get everybody on the same page of training, but I think they've, they've kind of, they didn't handle as well as they could, and it's going to be, it's going to be impactful to many police departments, including Carver, as far as being able to put people out on traffic details, which is an important part of what we do with public safety. It doesn't seem like such an important thing, but if we don't have people out there directing traffic, we can't have people on the road working safely.
No, thank you. Questions from the board? All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we appoint the special police officers listed previously. Unless you'd like me to list them again?
I think you should probably list them.
Peter Allegrini, Patrick Charette, Christopher Maloney, Jim Moscato, Ashley Odell, Michael O'Donnell, and Scott Sampson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Chief. Very much appreciated.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And please thank all the officers for all their hard work on our behalf.
Thank you, I will.
All right. And the next item, also for you, Chief, is the King Richard's Fair Traffic Study Update.
So, I can give you the update that we have been working on this with King Richard's Fair. I can say that they are working with us on it, that we're working together to come up with a good solution for the start of the next season, and we anticipated we'd have a better plan by today. I did talk with them today, and I should have a plan for us to go over by Monday, I hope. So, the traffic engineer that's doing the study ended up being a little bit behind schedule, probably about two weeks behind schedule from what he thought he was, and they have a draft plan, and they're hoping to get that to me by Monday so that we can, we can look at it and make some decisions from there.
Is there anything the select board can do to help you in that endeavor?
Well, I think your continued support in this is important. I think, you know, I've heard it from the select board, and you've heard it from me, nobody's looking to put the fair out of business, but we are looking to make sure that we don't repeat last year's traffic congestion. And if we do end up with that much traffic, which would be great for the fair because a lot of the traffic went into the fair, then we have a better plan in place to deal with it effectively. We are, again, dealing with a two-lane road, bringing an additional 6,000 people sometimes on a daily basis to that fair. So, we're trying to make the most efficient use of the 33 feet that we have so that we can get people by and get people in as best we can. I don't think there's going to be a perfect solution to it because, because you can't, you don't, you have a two-lane road, but I think there'll be a solution that will definitely be more palatable, I hope, to the residents and to the patrons of the fair.
As part of your discussions, have you had discussions about maybe not having parking in certain side roads? Because that seemed to have caused a lot of problems.
Yes, I think that we've, the plan will show where we're going to put signs up showing Mayflower Road, a Meadow Road wouldn't be, a Meadow Street wouldn't be hopefully accessible. We've come to the realization of the, or the understanding that through Waze and some of those apps, if we get on it ahead of time, we can show that those roads are out of service so that Waze won't direct them around there. Because I think the biggest problem with Mayflower Road last year was after 58 backed up, Waze was sending people around down Mayflower Road, that backed up, and then it was just, it was plugged up. If you look at, if you put in King Richard's Fair right now in Google Maps and look, you can see the traffic is backed up on both roads. So, hopefully, we'll be able to stop that with appropriate signage and a better plan. We're going to, we're talking, the plan, well, the plan that I discussed with them originally, I think will be coned off three lanes of traffic in both directions by quite a distance so that we can stack traffic that's waiting to turn into the fair in the middle and let other traffic by so that it won't block it up as much. We've tried to do that in the past with a short piece of road, you know, from the entrance, the north entrance down to about Mayflower Road. We're going to extend that plan to make better use of the road so, and to allow people who are not going to the fair to travel by on both sides.
Well, thank you and your entire group and for all your hard work on this. Questions from the board? Ms. Ewens?
I just wanted to thank you too, Chief, for insisting on this traffic study.
You're welcome.
It's much needed, much, much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much. I think it's the right thing to do for both the businesses and for the residents of the town and for the, you know, for the liability of the town. I think we need to have an actual plan in place for it, so. I appreciate the support from the select board on it because I think it's the right thing to do.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. Do you think the last year's issues were more of the year after COVID versus the new normal as far as?
So, we do believe that that played an impact because the fair had been closed the year before, so there were a lot of people are coming, you know, everybody's coming back out. It was a good time to get back out, and I think that did play a role. But, I, the only thing I can say is, where I grew up in Dartmouth, on Fonscon Road, when I was a child, there was no traffic. And now, at least two times a day, you can't go down that road. So, I don't know what happened. I think more people are driving, I'm not really sure, but there are, it seems like traffic has increased over the past 10 years and not decreased. So, I think part of it is, it might be an anomaly, we might find that out, and maybe we won't need as extensive a plan, but I don't think we can go into next year hoping for that. You know what I mean?
That's right.
Agree. Just my thoughts.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief. As always, if we can do anything to help that process move along, please let us know.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time tonight and recognizing Officer Benoit. That was very nice. Thank you.
Thirty-eight years, that's quite, that's quite a legacy.
Quite a long time, yep. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda this evening is the AD Makepeace gift of land to town for industrial communicate, for an industrial communications cell tower. Mr. Fennessy?
Actually, the fire chief is going to present.
Oh, Chief Weston, all right. Thank you. Chief, welcome.
Good evening. How are you, folks? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fennessy. Certainly interrupt anytime you want, but Mr. Fennessy did ask me if I could give you guys just a pretty brief update on this, what's going on here. It's a little story, so I'll just try to be as brief as I can. On October 26, 2021, the zoning board requested that the fire department, which we represent the police department and also the EMS department, on planning and zoning issues, to review a proposed communication tower submittal and comment back to the board. The proposed communication tower is located at Zero Federal Road. It's really in the vicinity of the Ocean Spray Receiving Station in that area, and that's considered a critical communication tower location if it does get developed for public safety. That area, that location's in the area of our community, and it's on the fringe of our public safety communications where that is. Currently, public safety portable communications in this area are very problematic during the storms and weather events. This combined, we have a large mobile home park, obviously, right there, and the potential for large-scale development projects to happen, obviously, in that area, if developed, makes this a critical location for a communications tower. It's been precedent for over the last 20 years that Carver Public Safety, police, fire, and EMS, we comment on plans presented to the ZBA for any proposed communications towers within Carver. This is because tower locations and the private equipment that's mounted on them can create some real causes of interference to our public safety equipment. And also, good tower locations are scarce, and proper locations are critical for public safety. So, we do get involved in that process. Normally, our public safety comments to the ZBA on proposed towers include maintaining that we get top area on the site for our antennas, space down below for a possible future generator, and also an enclosed shelter that we can mount our radio equipment in. We also make sure that we won't get charged any fees, or the town won't get charged any fees, which communication companies are known to do. So, we try to watch that pretty closely. The Carver Zoning Board approved the communication tower at Zero Federal Road on January 25th, however, with conditions. One of the conditions was that the, that a license agreement between Industrial Corporation and AD Makepeace Companies, along with Carver Public Safety and the town of Carver, is agreed to private, to, prior to a building permit being issued. After some back-and-forth negotiations, and there was quite a bit of back-and-forth with Industrial Tower, Industrial Tower is the owner of the tower, and AD Makepeace is the owner of the land, we have developed a license and facilities agreement that outlines all the conditions and the gifts being granted to the town and Carver Public Safety, and I believe you have that in your packet. This includes space for mounting two microwave dishes, two antennas at the top of the tower, a generator, and shelter space for radio equipment at the base of the tower. There will be no fees assessed to the town, and there's also going to be some conduits put in for future fiber optics to run into the shelter if we choose. I want to say that both companies really stepped up, especially the AD Makepeace Company. AB Makepeace is going to provide Carver Public Safety with a gift for the purchase installation of 150-square-foot shelter at the bottom of the tower, a backup generator, which includes installation, and has agreed to cover all future electrical costs to power the radio equipment in the shelter. AD Makepeace has always been a tremendous supporter of Carver Public Safety, and this is yet another example, and we thank them. Through Mr. Fennessy, a lot of hard work has been done by your town administrator, KNP Legal Counsel, and your public safety chiefs that went into drafting this agreement before you, and we asked the select board, obviously, to hopefully endorse it. With your approval, this agreement will become a future communication site. I do want to be clear that this is a future site, and with this agreement, will stay available for us until we can find sufficient funds to purchase these radio infrastructure equipment to make it operational. So, it isn't our intent at this exact moment to put this online, but sometime in the future, when we find funds available, we will add it to our system. But, we want to take a proactive approach in making sure we secure the location, or certainly our space on the tower now. And finally, at a meeting, a future meeting, I got to imagine that the land associated with this tower will have to be taken out of 61A tax title with the approval of the select board. Carver Public Safety, both police, fire, and EMS, ask you, the members of the select board, to support this process when the time arises to ensure that this critical location for future public safety communications is memorized. That's all I have. I'd certainly ask Mr. Fennessy if he wants to fix any of my errors and go from there.
Good job presenting that, and the work that the chief did on this was phenomenal. This was a long process. It predated me getting here in January. It got to the point of drawing up these contracts in the last, oh, probably six weeks, going back and forth with the three entities involved, and the chief's been right there with me doing that, so. So, thank you, Chief.
No, thank you. The only point I might make is, I don't see anything in the packet.
I think it was emailed out.
Yes, I think she emailed it, it was sent out in a separate email from, yes, it was a big package.
And it's on the desk to be signed.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that there's nothing in the packet. It was a large.
See what happens when Elaine takes vacation?
I'm telling you. I'm telling you. Other questions from the board on this? Anyone? Is there a motion?
Well, my only question is, should we make a motion to endorse the agreement between the three parties?
Yes, to, to.
Well, we have to, we have to vote to accept the gift, don't we?
Accept the gift, and then do we need to endorse the agreement?
Yes, and, yeah, both for that, yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the gift of land to the town of Carver from AD Makepeace. It's zero.
Land, you know, it's also the, the equipment and.
And the equipment, and the shelter, and all the, and the electricity, and all the things Chief Weston just said.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question on maybe a second component, which is the agreement itself. I did not go through it, so is that being voted on a different night?
We're endorsing that, but the three chiefs have, it's been written to their satisfaction. I mean, I certainly am not an expert on this.
I would like to read it before I vote on it.
Yeah, it's, well, it's not a rush thing, so you can put it off to the, you can, or you can vote it.
So, can we, can we vote to accept the?
The gift.
The gift?
It's a separate form.
And put the, put the agreement, the endorsement of the agreement on July's agenda? Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So, Sarah, would you be willing to amend your, your motion just to?
I didn't make a motion to endorse the agreement. It was simply to accept the gift of land, the built, the housing, the radio structure, the electricity.
Okay.
And all the other things that you mentioned, Chief Weston.
If I could just say, there really is no gift of land.
Okay.
Just so, just so there's no confusion. It's more of the generator, the shelter.
The generator.
Installation.
The share of the shelter.
And electricity costs.
Installation and electricity, no cost to the town.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just reading from the agenda, because that's what the agenda says, the AD Makepeace gift of land.
Is that a problem?
So, well, so.
No, because it's a motion and a vote. It's going to gather.
Shelby, could you read back the motion?
Motion to accept the gift of land and equipment, shelter.
That's what I, so I think we need to.
Well, I'll amend the motion then. It's a motion to accept the shelter, the electricity, the equipment.
Generator.
The generator. Is that it? From, from AD Makepeace Corporation to the town of Carver, right? No charge.
Thank you, Ms. Ewens. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
When did Elaine send the, the email out with the gift packet that you referenced, the large thing? I just, I don't remember seeing it.
Well, it was prior to this meeting.
Yeah? I just, I don't remember seeing it, so.
So, do you want to just hold this off till?
Why don't we hold it off till July?
That's what I suggest.
Why don't we hold it off till, why don't we hold it off till July?
And make sure everybody has a chance to.
Yeah, Chief, we apologize, but I think, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to review it.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I had a chance to explain what I could for it.
Appreciate it.
No, we appreciate it.
If you don't have any questions. If you have questions, I'll be back. If you don't, I won't, so.
Does anybody have any questions to the chief while he's here on this? All right. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. No problem. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the adoption of the updated hazard mitigation plan, and I recall that, that's certainly not in your packet. That was another email that went out. That was quite a large packet. Mr. Walsh?
Yes, and Mr. Walsh has been in before to present this.
He has, yes. And I believe, Ms. Ewens, you worked on this as well.
I did.
Correct? All right.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background and to what we're asking of you tonight, which is to adopt the hazard mitigation plan. A little background, all cities, towns, states, and the country are mandated by federal government to have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan. This plan has to be updated every five years, and each update requires approval by the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency as well as FEMA. Many hazard mitigation FEMA grant opportunities are limited to municipalities that have and approved and adopted hazard mitigation plan. The requirements of what must be included in the plan are very specific, published by FEMA in a formal document. This process is extremely time-consuming, requires experience with passing FEMA standards for approval. Carver's last hazard mitigation approval and adoption was 2016. It was the plan of emergency management to begin the update effort in 2020 so that completion would meet the 2021 update deadline. However, due to the coronavirus pandemic occurring in early 2020 and the resulting shutdown of most activities, this process was not started until 2021. We had expected reasonably so, I think, that FEMA might give an extension for one year, but they did not. The town contracted in 2021 with Fosson O'Neill as our consultant on the project to work with the town working group, which I want to just recognize the members of. Fosson O'Neill's team was led by, I acted as project manager. Fosson O'Neill's team was led by Andrew Gleins, who is, I assume you've met here before, and there were basically one environmental scientist, Alex Dorye, and Melissa Jaffe, and Elsie Laduke, who were coastal scientists. Bill Napala Tano from Serpide represented the region. The Carver team was made up of Sarah Ewens, who's vice chair of the board, as you know, former planning board member and former conservation agent, Jim Walsh, at the time, planning and economic development director, Craig Weston, fire chief, as well as cranberry grower, Brooke Monroe, conservation agent, John Woods, deputy. grower, Brooke Monroe, conservation agent, John Woods, deputy director of operations and maintenance, Kevin Tracy of the North Carver Water District, and Mike Paddock from the assessors board, and also a local business owner. So that was the group from Carver and, and from Fossett O'Neill. And we had several meetings throughout 2021. There was a public survey performed in August, I think, of 2021, on the town website and on Facebook, seeking input from residents regarding hazards, hazards as they saw them and what they might have to say regarding the potential natural hazards. There was a public presentation on October 26, 2021. The final draft was posted to the town website on January 19, 2021, 2022, rather, with comments from the public to be made by February 9. Feedback and comments were also solicited from all of our neighboring towns as well as Serpide, and comments from Serpide were received. The final draft was sent for approval and forwarding, forwarded from MEMA to FEMA on March 7, and after a few minor tweaks, both MEMA and FEMA, to the plan, the have approved, we received the FEMA approval on June 2, 2022, subject to the formal adoption by the town Select Board, which is what brings me here tonight. So at this point, it's been approved by Serpide, it's been approved by the working group, it's been approved by Fossett O'Neill, it's been approved by MEMA, it's been approved by FEMA. There's really no option to change anything, please, and I would encourage you to adopt it with a form that I believe you have. And I also like to publicly thank all members from Fossett O'Neill and also from the Carver Working Group for all their hard work, cooperation throughout what, what is a very labor-intensive process. It's the most difficult plan we have to get up to date.
Mr. Walsh, thank you, and I would also like to thank all the members of the working group. The plan was incredibly extensive, and I can't imagine how many hours it took to put together, but thanks to you and to Ms. Ewens and everybody else on the, on the working group, because that was quite an endeavor.
Sarah, in particular, is a, is a real valued member to have on there because of her experience, and because she was the only one around who did it with me in 2016. So she knew the history, and she had been through it once, and puts, puts in an extra effort, and I appreciate that.
I know, speaking for the town, we appreciate all your hard work in that plan. Other questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Walsh, for everything you did.
Is there a motion to, to adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan?
I move we adopt the updated 2022 hazard mitigation plan.
A second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
If you could just get me that form when you've, well, signed it...
Absolutely, we'll sign it out for the meeting and get it to you.
It still, it still has to go through the state back to FEMA before it's finally adopted.
How, how long, do you recall in your experience, how long that normally takes?
From this point forward? Well, I think we'd have, done by the end of the summer. You have no, you have no FEMA.
Great, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the appointment to, of someone to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District. Robert Belbin is our current representative, and he has expressed an interest in continuing to serve. Historically, we had a member of the Select Board serve. Is there any member of the Select Board who is interested in serving?
Most of them.
Okay?
Jim's not here, you can nominate him.
I, I personally think Mr. Belbin has done a, a good job on the committee. There any thoughts from anyone on the board?
Is there a requirement that a board of selectman member has to be on this?
No, it's an appointee of the board of selectmen.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Robert Belbin to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next up, let's see, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance. We'll, we already did the town administrator update. Mr. Fantasy, is there anything else that you'd like to update us on?
No, those are two.
All right. All right. Our next meeting, I actually believe this is in error, our next meeting is not 7/19/2022. Our next meeting actually is going to be Thursday, this Thursday, it's going to be a joint meeting with the North Carver Water District, but I believe our next meeting is, our next regular meeting is...
It's earlier than that.
It's earlier than that. I believe it's July 6, if memory serves me correctly. I believe it's July 6.
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday. Yeah, that was, we, we struggled in July to find a date that every member of the board was available. In fact, as I recall from looking, there were two dates in the entire month of July that the entire board was available for a meeting. So I believe, I've checked your calendars, I know we talked about that at the last meeting, but I believe it's July 6. And of course, we have a meeting, this, joint meeting this Thursday with the North Carver Water District. Let's see, approval of the minutes of 5:19. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of 5:19.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. The minutes of June 7.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of June 7, 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. And the minutes of June 15.
I'll make a motion we approve minutes of June 15, 2022.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, Select Board Community Announcements. Mr. Carter?
The only I've got is, I guess, the farmer's market starts this Sunday, the 26th, so I hope everyone tries it out. I like going every, every year.
All right. Ms. Boca?
The townwide yard sale is this, I see that smile mark.
I knew what was coming.
The townwide yard sale is this Saturday. We have more people signed up this year than last year, almost 60. This year, we have an interactive map. The map and the list will be on the town website. This year, I found out Shelby's going to help me do that, so look for that. Weather's going to be good. Have fun, everybody.
All right. Ms. Ewens?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right. And I just want to quickly congratulate the Carver Crusaders Boys Baseball Team. They made it to the Elite Eight before finally falling. That was a tremendous accomplishment on their behalf, so congratulations. And with that, our next item is a joint meeting with the planning board for the appointment of an alternate. Our applicants are Donald Williams and Kim Branch. So why don't we take a five-minute recess while the planning board gets settled, and then we'll reconvene our meeting? All right. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. At this time, the next item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the planning board for the appointment of an alternate. Our applicants are Donald Williams and Kim Branch, but prior, just quickly, prior to us getting to that, Mr. Fantasy has an update on an existing agenda item regarding the small water systems phone numbers.
Okay, so the phone number I gave out earlier is a daytime phone number. The daytime phone number is 978-486-1008, and after hours, if you want to make a complaint about the water situation, it's 978-501-7600. And if you call either one, the one will tell you to call this other number, so...
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy. Mr. Shea, would you like to call your board to order?
Please. At this time, I would like to call to order the planning board at the joint session with the Select Board on June 21 at 7:07 PM. Thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you. We have two applicants, Donald Williams and Kim Branch. Is, Mr. Williams, I see yourself. Is, is Ms. Branch here as well? All right, great, let's see. Mr. Williams comes first on our agenda, so, Mr. Williams, if you'd like to step up and just tell us a little bit about yourself. Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
My name is Don Williams. I live at 6-8 South Meadow Village. I moved to Carver in 2003 when I retired from teaching. I taught fourth grade for 33 years. I'm still ahead of Bart Simpson. He hasn't been out of fourth grade yet, but I managed it. I spent 20 years in the Massachusetts National Guard, first 14 as military policeman in Plymouth, and I took a break in service, and then figured if I'm going to get my 20 years in, I better get it in while I can still pass the test. So I went back in, and I was assigned to G2 section of the Yankee Division Headquarters as an intelligence analyst. I went back to school for that in the Army, get certified in that. That was a lot of map work. Military maps are pretty similar to civilian. They do have their own differences. They use meters instead of feet, and they, the scales are a little different, but mappings... I'm not sure I'd want to find the reverse azimuth for a fire solution yet on the enemy position, but I'm pretty familiar with maps. I also had a Massachusetts real estate license for years, so I'm familiar with the real estate aspects and plot plans and so forth. I have been starting to go through some of the Carver bylaws, interesting readings, to say the least. It's 121 pages of one part of the planning board, excuse me, regulations, and I think 99 pages of the second. As long as I don't have to certify that the road layout was compacted to six inches to 95%, you know, dry density using the Proctor Scale, I might be able to understand most of the regulations and the bylaws. I also have gone through the Carver Recreation and Open Space Plan the other night. I went through the 74 pages of the North Carver Project. They have many pretty pictures and colored graphs. You can tell when a third party's paying for the, for the project. I've gone through some of the regular town bylaws. As an aside, I found the ponds and lakes very interesting in that the board of selectmen allows the entrance and exiting on the ponds, except a butters, the guests and servants may use their own property. So I'm not sure if the servants go with the butters or the servants go with the guests.
That's an old, old bylaw.
Well, and it also says you're in charge of determining what is appropriate swimwear. I don't know, I didn't see a chart or a graph on that, so... Everything else has charts and graphs. You have to have criteria, and you need to have metrics, and you need all the things that go with a regulation. You don't just dislike something, it has to conform or comply or so forth to render a judgment on a regulation, but I served 11 years at Old Colony School Committee, and my last term, I let expire because the meetings were on Zoom, and Old Colony has 15 members and five or six administrators, and I was trying to watch it on a small computer screen, and I said, no, I'm too old for that. I go back to where I can show up at a meeting and put my two cents in, and I'm available for sidewalks anytime. I'm retired, nothing much to do all day, so that's not a problem. That's about my spiel, I think, unless you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Oh, I understand the, the role that you play, I kind of liken it to the emergency goalie. You have your goalie, then you have your backup goalie, and then most hockey teams have a person in the stands in their regular street clothes that if the goalie gets run over by the Zamboni, you run down and fill in, so the, often it's kind of like that. You get to participate, but only vote under certain conditions where somebody's missing or somebody's not at any one of the meetings, so, and I'm not out to unseat an incumbent. So I don't know when the terms expire. I know Mr. Dion waited till there was an opening, so, you know, for normal progression, so not to run out to the election and try to do the first incumbent that comes up.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, would your board like to ask whatever questions?
I will, if the board has any questions they'd like to ask?
I hope it made sense.
I, I personally would like to ask, what is it that the planning board does or that you believe the planning board's job is to do?
It is to, well, landowners have certain rights, only certain rights. I mean, you can't go out in your backyard and dig a 600-foot hole. Neighbors have certain rights, but their rights kind of butt up to the, you know, you, back to the real estate, you get the NIMBYs and the drawbridge people. You know, they buy their little house, and it's all surrounded by woods, and they're so happy, but they don't own the woods. And then somebody comes along and wants to build, and they're all up in arms. Well, what did you expect to a point? I mean, and the same thing, they get their little house, they pull the drawbridge up, nobody else can do anything. Planning board, I think it is to make sure that a project conforms and complies, conforms with the rules, and they comply with those rules. You know, they, they have rights, they want to build a house, they want to, you know, some towns make the zoning, first, say, a subdivision, you know, granite curbs both sides, five-foot concrete sidewalks both sides, try to make it so that they discourage certain buildings. I had a friend that was the, well, he called himself the anti-planner in one of the W-towns west of Boston where I grew up, and his job was to, you know, kibosh certain things in the town. I mean, that goes to the other extreme. You know, landowner has rights, neighbors has rights, overall town community has rights, and they have to blend, they have to mesh, and if one gets too far, the other gets hurt. You know, it's a compromise, but you have the rules, planning board reviews the plans, you conform, you comply, then you're almost, you have to, as was it witnessed tonight with the liquor license? They follow the rules, they have their rights, the project should proceed. You know, I know Plymouth tried to limit two package stores within a mile of each other, and then went to the ABCs and said, no, they don't have a bylaw saying you can't be that close. Carver, if you, it's near, you could open a package store right next to the other package store. Competition is not a reason to deny. There are certain reasons. You may not like it, you may not like the design or the color, but certain companies come in, they have a color scheme. You know, they have a national color scheme, and I've worked with different companies. One of my children, we had some stores, and you go to, and they didn't like the color schemes of the company, the store that wanted to paint. The lady wanted to paint the store a certain color. That's not up to you. It's not your color scheme, it's their store, they decide. So it's back and forth, but you all don't always agree, but you got to get along.
Thank you very much.
And I hope I didn't ramble again too much.
Anything else from the planning board, Mr. Shea? John?
Yeah, real quick question. With regards to these projects, let's see, how do you see the planning board's position on protecting national, natural resources?
If it's part of the regulations, then you do it. I mean, you, your idea of protecting and somebody else's idea of protecting is, you know, somewhat arbitrary unless you've got a certain criteria, metrics. You know, you can say, it's against the overall welfare and well-being of the town. Well, that's your opinion. I don't see a metric, I don't see a... Everything has to be criteria-driven in education nowadays. You don't just not like something because you don't like it, you have to have proof, you have to have backing, you have to have, you know, some sort of method of determining whether you're protecting or not protecting it. It's not just a 100% opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Dion? Can you come back to your question that comes up, Ms. Dela?
If you had personal feelings about a specific...
If you had personal feelings about a specific project that was going on and your feelings went against our bylaws, but you were so stuck in that feeling that that shouldn't happen, but our bylaws permitted it, what would you do?
If it's permitted, your personal opinion, it's not, it's not a vote like an election. You like somebody or you don't like somebody. You have freedom to choose. You're bound by the confines, the four squares of the regulations. Your personal opinion is somewhat irrelevant to following, conform. And then if you don't conform, making them comply.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, look what's going on in politics nowadays with people that don't agree just because they don't agree, you know.
That's for sure.
Mr. Robinson?
Oh, I'm sorry. If you wanted to say I...
No.
So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to come on and learn the position. And would you be interested in running for a position if a position were available when they come up?
Yes, if one comes available, I'd be willing to run. I would not run against an incumbent just to run. I can, you know, bide my time, wait and see what happens.
Good. And I would like to know, what do you personally think your strength is that you would be bringing to the planning board?
I hope some common sense. I dealt with fourth graders a lot.
There is none of that left anymore, so that's good.
You know, it's, like I said, you can't always get your way and some people stomp their feet and some people don't, so, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea's the planning board. All set?
I believe so. Mr. Deion? Have you read the master plan or do you know about the master plan?
I, to be honest, could not find something listed as master plan. I was looking. I saw open space. I saw, but nothing came up as termed master plan in the websites that I went through today. I have, if, I have read before, maybe it was before, but if it's the one that has the history of the town and all the different, I've read that probably many years ago, to be honest. But I could not find that document today when I looked at the webpages.
The town website can be awfully confusing.
If I could just add, I have no connections with any businesses in town, no connections with any person on any boards or committees, and no financial interest in any thing, project going on. I live at South Meadow Village. I own one five-hundred-and-twenty-fourth share of the village. So if something comes up for that, I'll, you know, recuse myself, but.
Are there questions from the select board?
Yes, I just have one question. When a member comes on to the planning board, what training do they go through in order to get up to speed? And generally, how fast can they get up to speed?
We generally have, we generally have a couple of quick, well, maybe they don't seem very quick at the time, but a couple introductory courses in regards to the duties of the planning board and some of the more complex issues like A and R and subdivisions.
Mr. Fantasy or maybe to Mr. Bott, to you, is there, are there any MMA resources or anything available to folks that join planning boards? Is there anything like that that they can avail themselves of?
The, Ma, I'm Tom Bott, the town planner here in Carver, Mass. We recently had a training session, CPTC, Citizens Planning Training Collaborative, host these meetings. We had one for a planning board for subdivision, I mean, for rules and responsibilities of the planning board and ZBA members. The sessions were attended jointly by a planning board and ZBA members as well as an introduction to the zoning act. So we had those materials that we've kept to share with the applicant as well. I'm also obviously a resource, but there are a number of modules that are on the CPT's website. But a lot of it is, so we have all this stuff. What do we do now? And so there's just no way to get, you know, brilliant in the first, second, third meeting. But, you know, we have those materials. You know, I'm accessible as well for those things to get folks up to speed. But there is a fairly reasonable package. We just had a session on one and we've got those materials queued up with a note on it that says associate member. So as soon as we appoint somebody, we'll get busy with them.
Great. Thank you.
Last question.
Bogart?
You used the terms conform and comply often. Sometimes when projects come before the planning board, they'll come and ask for variances or loosening of the bylaws. What would make you open to loosening a bylaw to a, to a project?
Well, watching the last couple of meetings, you have, you know, commercial buildings going side by side and there's certain distances and plantings and things to make everything look pretty. That is nice if the building were in more residential area, but in an industrial area, it's going to be a string of, you know, all commercial industrial buildings. It's nice to have some trees and plants to make it look a little nice, but it's still not a park. It's not, you don't get a picnic luncheon. We're gonna go drive to the industrial park and have a picnic with the kids. So it's nice if it looks nice, but, you know, to the, if it's seventeen feet and not twenty feet, is that, you know, that big of a weight? You know, depends on the size of the waiver, actually, you know, obviously. But I think just driving around town here, Carver's identity seems to be turning to more of a metal fabricated building. On North Main Street, you've got, you know, the big green ones and you've got the gray ones and you've got pretty much any new, you know, maybe they could be spruced up a little. There's green ones on Lillian Way that you had all kinds of discussions about and they put some white grates on them and had them put shutters, but the shutters are black. You can't even notice them going by. You know, maybe they could have been white. You can change, you know, a little bit of the variances, maybe, you know, spruce it up, maybe a brick facade on the bottom three feet. The big gray one there that sells the chemical, the fertilizers, cranberry supplies, they've got at least a two-tone gray on the top and a different shade on the bottoms that are just, you know, twenty-five-foot green metal with black shutters that you can't see driving by, you know. I mean, you can get variances and waivers and they make sense sometimes, you know. Sidewalks on, you know, both sides of the street, maybe some, if it's only a few houses, maybe you need one side. And does it have to be bituminous concrete? Would steel rebar in it or can be, you know, just hot top? You know, there's waivers to, you know, granite curbs. Some towns are, you know, granite curbs completely everywhere instead of a Cape Cod bermata, you know, hot top.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Ms. Shear, do you have anything?
Well, thank you. It's more of an observation than a question. A couple of things. First, thanks for applying. I know you have a great deal of experience that will be useful on the planning board. And I wanted to point out too that, so, Mr. Gaskett, I think, had asked a question about environmental, what's your take on that? I mean, for example, there is a bylaw, a zoning bylaw that says, you know, if a, say, a business comes in and clears twenty acres, they have to keep the dust down. And that's something that isn't always happening. Would, you know, would be a good thing to make sure that we do.
You know, comply part of, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing that I find in particular interesting about Carver is our water resource district is an overlay. So everyone has to pay attention to that, which is very important.
I know. We have wells at South Meadow and they're very posting things about, you know, wasting water and putting the right stuff down the septic systems. And, you know, five-hundred-old people kind of keep track of each other.
Right. And well, and most of us have wells. And I think that it's a misconception that the agricultural community contributes to a lot of that contamination. They're so highly regulated that I think the largest contamination probably comes from homeowners.
Well, that's usually the case around most ponds and lakes. It's the nitrogen, it's the septic systems that, back when they were all cottages and now they're all year-round houses and the space and the amount of land, this doesn't work.
Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you. Was there anything else from the select board? Mr. Shea, your board's all set?
Mr. Williams? Any more questions from the board?
Nope. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Mr. Williams, thank you so much for, we appreciate you reaching out and applying for this position. We need all the help we can get here in the town, so we appreciate it. Our next applicant is Kim Branch. Ms. Branch? Thank you for coming tonight. If you'd just like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Kim Branch, Two Cherry Hill Drive. I've lived in Carver for a little over twenty years. Moved to New England to attend undergraduate school in Rhode Island, then attended graduate school in Boston, and here I am.
Okay.
And I have a math and science background.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shea, questions from the planning board?
I do. I will, I will, I've seen, I've seen you speak at a town meeting and I've seen you speak on planning issues, so I know you've been involved to some degree. I will ask you the same question I asked Mr. Williams, is what do you see as the purpose of the planning board?
I see the purpose as a tremendous responsibility. And I've seen that, that you have to also recognize the rules and regulations of the Conservation Commission. And I see those two groups working together. So I see you have to understand a lot of the subdivision, mass general laws. You have to understand the master plan laws. You have to understand, you know, the Massachusetts Wetland Act. Even though many times you'll hear that's not your jurisdiction, in many ways, everything that happens begins with knowing that those wetlands acts, when you're subdividing land, for instance, a lot of times I hear developers want a waiver for the resource areas. That's impossible because for you to divide a piece of land and to actually know that that's a developed piece of land, you need to know where those resource areas are. And what is happening over time is it's being excluded and you're missing rivers. Rivers have a two-hundred-foot riverfront. Also, you're missing that if somebody's dividing a lot of land and they want it to be waived and there's a lot of wetlands, you have to file a federal permit, a Section 401 permit, which could lead to a Section 404 permit. So I went around your question, but I think it's understanding that you have to be willing to read a lot. You have to be willing to study. And it seems to me that there's a lot of regulations and rules that you have to know.
Thank you.
Because there's culpability.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gaski?
Yeah, I would, I would go with essentially the same question that I had, although I think you touched on quite a bit of it with regards to, with regards to the planning board's, I guess, opening paragraph with regards to protecting our natural resources. And if you could speak to a little bit more about that with regards, not necessarily to the Wetlands Protection Act, but more with what we, what we as a board or what you as a board member would look for as far as to be comfortable that somebody coming before the board is doing their due diligence to protect the, protect the resources.
So before, when I first would watch the planning board meetings, I don't think I'd recognize how much detail that needs to be looked at ahead of time because recently you've been posting them. what I see is oftentimes it seems like developers are circumventing protecting the resources. And you need many eyes on a board as well as the staff to take a look at that. So maybe this would be better if I used an example. More recently, you were talking about the...
Excuse me. Please, we can't discuss anything that's currently in front of the board.
Okay, sorry.
No, thank you.
Yeah. So, let me think then.
I didn't mean to stymie.
No, that's all right. That's all right. I think to protect our resources, to listen to the community, to understand how important the aquifer is, to understand that anything that goes into the water is, can contaminate. They can be carcinogens. So, and sometimes I think developers do not recognize that it's not only the bylaws you follow or the mass general laws. There's also federal laws that need to be followed and to be looked at.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deion?
Pretty much you got everything written down here that, you know, satisfied me. You do know it's, you know, it's an alternate position. You'd be able to make sidewalks. You'd be able to make the meetings.
Yes.
Every Tuesday, every second Tuesday.
Yes.
So that wouldn't be an issue or anything?
How are you?
Hi.
Can you tell me your intentions of applying for this position when you have a pending lawsuit on a project that met all conditions?
What was the question again?
The question is, what is your intention of applying for this position when you actually have a pending lawsuit on a project that met all conditions?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
You do not have to respond to any question in regards to the lawsuit. We have to maintain a...
No, I don't mind at all. So are you referring to DEP?
Yes.
Yes. So that's interesting because really that's how I became interested in the planning board. And a plan had been subdivided here through an A and R. And one of the requisites in the bylaws is that the resource areas are put on the plan. So that developer put two cranberry bogs on there and a pond. In actuality, there's this substantial significant deeded drainage easement that runs all the way north to south across the property and then east to west. Not only that, right behind Cherry Hill Drive has deeded flowage rights. There is these wetlands and then behind our home and for Cherry Hill Drive, there's a stream with this large culvert. When you go onto the, onto the street, you have two outputs for...
Excuse me, can I interrupt here? Just because this is getting into a legal argument. And I'm assuming that she's represented by counsel and we are too, so it's...
No, it has, nobody from Carver is being represented.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'd rather you not go down that path.
Okay. No, and there was perennial streams there that have riverfront. But there's no counsel representing Carver whatsoever. Yeah.
May I just interject here for a second? But I think Ms. Sordello's question is, what, since you, given that you have this lawsuit, what is your intent by applying to planning board? I think that's...
Thank you, Sarah.
Oh, that was her question.
You know, I think it's allowed me to be very knowledgeable without recognizing over the last two years how important that is. And I think my hope would be that another person would not have to walk through what the thirty-four-plus of butters and I have, to recognize the importance of the Wetlands Act early on and to make sure that developers put the resource areas on the site plan. Because without having all the resource areas there, it's impossible to subdivide a piece of property. If you don't know that there's rivers there, if you don't know that there's drainage easements, if you don't know that there's flowage rights, then you're subdividing a plan that... then you're subdividing a plan that, that's going to end up in front of conservation and they feel kind of tied. You know, they, they don't quite understand, you know, why, why, why is there... Why is property divided right through a pond? Because there's no legal frontage. And legal frontage is, is key to subdividing land. But this is with the butters and DEP. There's, there's no one representing Carver whatsoever. The conservation, they are to be sent all of the information, but they've never requested any legal representation.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Williams. I, you, you've spoken and I'd like to know what you think that your strength is going to be that you'd be bringing to the planning board?
I believe it's that I enjoy reading. I love reading. I understand that it is a responsibility, that you cannot just come to a planning board meeting unprepared, that you have to recognize what laws are related to the subject area that is arriving on that day.
Thank you. And also, given the opportunity to run for a position, if it were to be open, would you be willing to run?
Yes, but as the other gentleman said, not against an incumbent. But I think this is an ideal position because I heard Mr. Deon say that, sitting here, he learned a lot. He was able to learn a lot as an alternate and decide that if this was something that he wanted to do.
Which is correct. It did help me out a lot.
All set, Mr. Shea?
And it's not that I still know everything, but you learn and learn. It, it never ends.
Anybody have any more questions?
All right. Mr. Carter?
Well, thank you for applying for the position. You seem very knowledgeable. And, uh, thank you.
Ms. Boggar?
No, I heard my answers through theirs, so...
Ms. Yuen?
Thank you. So, and I don't mean to beat this one to death, but I guess my question is, so your intent by applying to the planning board for this alternate position, your intent is essentially to be sort of a conservation representative on the planning board?
Not necessarily, but I believe from what I've learned the last two years, it really helps to understand the mass general laws that coincide with the conservation. So that they, so when land is subdivided, it should really be subdivided so variances are not needed. In order to do that, you really have to have those resource areas ahead of time on the site plan. Otherwise, if they're split into lots and then all of a sudden they recognize, oh, you know, there is a perennial stream there or, you know, there is a drainage easement there, then you start needing variances. You need variances from zoning. You need variances from the Conservation Commission. And the Supreme Court clearly says that a lot is a lot if it, without the need of variances. Otherwise, it's a parcel. And when you have a, a piece of land, sometimes developers are trying to put too many lots in there. So instead of 18, maybe they need 12. They should not need variances. They shouldn't need variances from the health department. They shouldn't need them from the conservation. They shouldn't need them from zoning. A lot is, otherwise you're going against the bylaws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Branch, thank you. As I said to Mr. Williams, it's going last. Most of your questions get answered, so I appreciate your replying.
Thank you.
And I guess that, that's it. Anything else from anyone? Thank you, Ms. Branch.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Shea, there's a couple of things we can do here. We are nine members of the planning board and the select board here. We could simply go around the room and, and vote, or we could entertain motions. Seems, seems to me, we have nine members. It's a pretty simple process to just go around and, and vote after some discussion, if you're amenable to that. All right. Is there any, any discussion from anyone? Everyone think they're ready to vote? All right. Mr. Robinson, would you like to start us off?
I'll start with, my vote would be for Mr. Williams.
All right.
My vote would also be for Mr. Williams.
My vote would be for Kim.
All right.
I think I would go with Ms. Branch.
All right.
I will vote for Ms. Branch. Also, I, I think she's well-spoken and well-researched.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carter?
Oh, both candidates are impressive, but I think I'd go with Mr. Williams.
Ms. Boggar?
I will vote for Ms. Branch.
All right. And I, I agree. I think both candidates were very impressive, but my vote would be for Mr. Williams. Ms. Yuen?
Thank you. Yes, my vote would be for Mr. Williams.
Shelby, is my addition correct? That it's five votes for Mr. Williams and four votes for Mr. Branch? So, Mr. Williams? Uh, yeah, Ms. Branch, yes, I'm sorry. And Mr. Williams, congratulations. Ms. Branch, we appreciate your, your applying and your interest in the town. And there are a number of board and committee openings available, so I, I urge you to take a look at the, at the list on the select board website and consider applying for one of, of the others. Mr. Williams, don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk before you attend any meetings. Is there anything else from the planning board? Would you like to adjourn your board?
The chair of the planning board will accept a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sardello, seconded by Mr. Deon. Kevin, if you would? Yay or nay?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Deon says aye.
Joe Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
All right. I would also entertain a motion from the select board. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Area 58, as always.